Just for those out there watching, we're coming to you from the brand-new Lavenda Learning Lab. And we just had an incredible ceremony for the dedication of this space. Honoring former principal and assistant superintendent Terry Lavenda. I do want to say a couple of words. I first met Terry Lavenda when I was in middle school at Aylesworth Junior High School. It was called back in those days. I gotta be honest with you, it scared the death of the man. He was kind of an imposing figure for a young middle school kid at that time. He was also a very young man at that time as well. But I had the great fortune to get to know him as an adult. And I'll tell you, one of the finest, greatest people I've ever met in my life. And it was truly an honor to be able to see his today and watch. The dedication of this space to just an incredible human being and incredible family. So congratulations to the Lavenda family in this space. And thank you, Dr. Alanez, Dr. Stevens, for this space. And naming this in honor of Terry Lavenda. So just want to say thank you.
If I could just add a couple of comments. I was very fortunate enough to attend Fegley Middle School when Terry was the principal and Mike Berta was the assistant. And a lot of times kids will say, you know, high school might have been the best years of their life. And for me, I think middle school was very enjoyable. The atmosphere that they created, the family they talked about earlier. I'll never forget whether they made Thanksgiving dinners or lunches for their students. The principals wore tuxes and they just made it a real family affair. And I mean, every Thanksgiving, I always think about it. And so, you know, a lot of people go through life wondering if they've ever made a difference. And obviously, most people in education know that they have. But Terry was very special and I think it was a great honor to name this after him. Nice job.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we move on?
He was actually the principal when I went to Fegley as well. And I will never forget when I was in sixth grade, I lost my picture money. And I was crying hysterically and looked everywhere and we couldn't find it. And Mr. Lavenda gave me a hug and he paid for my pictures. And the next day I found it in my gym locker. It's always ridiculous, but he was so sweet. I will never forget it.
That's awesome. Okay, so we also had kind of off of our agenda, I'd like to say thank you publicly to the Portage High School Step As team, the Fegley Choir, as well as the Portage High School Music Department and the Jazz Band for their presentations and performances this evening. What incredible talent we have in our schools. And that's just a little micro-nism of what's throughout all these buildings. And that's due to the hard work and dedication of the staff and our teachers and everyone and the families that influence those kids. And we could be so proud of all of them for what they do. So we'll begin our meeting. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to our superintendent's consent agenda, which contains our personnel report from October the 25th, our donation report and claims report, as well as a facility use request report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next, we have our board's consent agenda, which contains the minutes of our special board meeting, 2023 budget hearing on October the 10th, minutes of our discussion meeting from October the 10th, minutes of the policy committee meeting from October the 10th, and the minutes of the special board meeting ratification hearing of October the 13th. Do we have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the board consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on now to our board development. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
I do. I would like to report that the Portage Township Food Pantry presented information about their September information. The number of individuals that were served, 392. Last month, it was 417. But we probably will be seeing an increase next month due to the holiday. There were 19 new households that were served, returning households, 198 individuals. There were eight, there was $8,205 in monetary donations during the month of September and 16,000 pounds of food and other items. That was through the community members, churches, tag days, businesses, grocery stores, and the Food Pantry truly appreciates their generosity. The elections and recognition of the officers was held last week. The following individuals were served during the 2022-23 year. Joseph Casper is president, Linda Brasher, vice president, Carol Jones, secretary, Doug Sipkin, treasurer, Linda Roque, and Denise Furnish, financial secretaries. The officers, board members, and volunteers are appreciated. They are truly making a difference in our community. The Education Foundation met, and the major saver cards will be sold as a fundraiser for $15. These cards will be valid until November of 2023. The campaign will begin from, or will be held from November 14th through the 21st for kindergarten through grade eight students. Some of the business participating are Culvers, one of my favorites, Portage Carwash, Dunkin' Donuts, White Castle, Mexicaliindo, and that's just to name a few. Three members of this board, of the Education Foundation Board, will be attending the Indiana Association of Public Education Foundations in Indianapolis on November 10th. This association provides foundations with quarterly newsletters, regional meetings, and information to assist the education foundations in different areas such as writing grants, lobbying for nonprofits, current issues, and solutions. So they also include marketing and branding, legal documentation, as well as other pertinent information. So another reminder that if you are shopping using Amazon, you could use a Smile, Amazon Smile, and please consider designating the Education Foundation as a charity to receive donations. This past month, I think it was about $27 that the foundation received, and it's just every little bit helps. So when you're doing your shopping, please consider placing that order and designating the Education Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that Amazon Smile is really easy. So we all shop on Amazon, and it's real easy to go on there and just sign up and then put in PTF in there. And then that's all you ever have to do. Whenever you purchase something, a percentage will go to them as a donation. It's real easy and it's a great cause to do that for. I do have a question for you, Trustee Vasquez, regarding the Food Pantries. We know we're heading into the holidays now, and it's a time where people seem to struggle the most, and we know with inflation where it is today and those circumstances, how can we help? What are ways that the public or ourselves, anybody can donate? Is it food? Is it money? Is it, what are the things, and how do we do that?
So as I mentioned, there were monetary donations in the amount of over $8,000. So if you are able to do that, you contact the trustee's office, make a donation. Also, if you have any items, any food items or non-perishable items that you would like to donate, you can do so. They do have a Facebook page, and they also have a website where you can find out more information about the location.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there any other board reports?
Yes, the Policy Committee met on October 10th. We reviewed 11 policies this month, and a few of those are nursing mothers, leave of absence, and approval of contracts, and they will be later in the agenda for a first reading.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to old business. We have our adoption of the 2023 school budget, the CPF Plan and Bus Replacement Plan.
I'm requesting the board to approve the 2023 school budget, which includes $90,237,983, the CPF Plan, which is the Capital Projects Fund Plan, and the Bus Replacement Plan. The resolutions, the individual resolutions are to follow in the new business section.
Thank you. Do we, do we need to read these funds, Mr. Elwood? This was sufficient? Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the adoption of the 2023 school budget, the CPF Plan, and the Bus Replacement Plan?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes. And now we have our first reading of the Niola Policies.
The only thing I'd like to mention here is, years back, the board, I believe in 2017, we had decided that regarding meal charge policies, that no students would receive a supplemental meal. All students would receive the meal of their choice. I just want to reassure you that in policy 8500.02, that is still what remains in this policy, that no student receives a supplemental meal regardless of their ability to pay.
Thank you. So this is just our first reading, so there is no action to take at this time. And so just back to that meal charge, that's important. At one time, we found that kids were getting supplemental lunches that maybe didn't show up with their lunch money, or maybe their account was empty, and we did put a stop to that. And hopefully, that's a permanent situation where no kid should have to worry about their lunch or be questioned whether they have money in their account or not. That's something that could be handled outside of the school building and outside of the children. And so thank you, Dr. Alanez. And I know, Attorney Elwood, you had a lot to do with making sure we get this set up in our policy, and that's what we do. So that's really a great thing for our kids.
If I may make a plug on this. We did at the trunk or treat, our food service department passed out some flyers regarding the Angel Food Fund, and of course, also the ability to still apply for free and reduced lunch and those applications. We've been making sure to get that information out to the public. But we will also be further advertising the Angel Food Fund now that we're back to meals being charged and that federally, we don't have all students eating for free any longer. So that information will be forthcoming. We've had a lot of community members ask for it.
Yeah, and we should advertise that. We should make sure that we get that on our social media and everywhere, because that's, again, just an opportunity for those who can to be able to support our kids.
I'd also like to add that those applications can be completed at any time in the event that there's a change of income in the family. So don't, you know, I just want our families to know that there is no cutoff. Some people would probably think that because we're already in October, that there was a deadline. So if there is a change in your income, please fill out those applications.
And it's all confidential. And, and there's, you know, that's what that, those funds are there for, to help, so. Okay, we'll move on to our new business. We have our retroactive approval to change the graduation date in June of 2023. Dr. Alanez?
So on our current 2022-2023 school year calendar, we designated June 11th, 2023, for PHS graduation. As requested, I'm proposing to move the graduation to Thursday, June 8th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, so that we can incorporate a rain date, Friday, June 9th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, in the hopes of holding graduation outdoors. We know that our families have worries that they will be limited to the four tickets due to it needing to be moved to the inside of the gymnasium. So we at least feel this gives us two opportunities in that week to host it outdoors. And if for some reason the weather still doesn't cooperate on June 9th, then we will host it indoors that evening.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the graduation date change in June 2023?
Make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Next, we have our approval of resolution R-10-2022 to adopt Bus Replacement Plan.
So board, I am requesting this resolution for the Bus Replacement Plan to be approved. It was properly advertised for the length of time required by statute and also available for the public's review.
Thank you. Once again, Mr. Elwood, do we need to read these resolutions?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R-10-22 to adopt our Bus Replacement Plan?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of resolution R-11-2022 to adopt Capital Projects Fund Plan for 2023.
Again, I'm requesting the approval for the Capital Projects Fund Plan through this resolution, which was properly advertised and available for the public to review.
Do we have a motion to approve our resolution R-11-2022 to adopt the Capital Projects Fund Plan?
I'd like a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Next up, we have our approval of resolution R-12-2022 to transfer funds from the Education Fund to the Operating Fund.
I'm requesting the transfer amount up to $6,500,000 during the 2023 school year from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund to cover expenditures that are not allocated in student instruction and learning under IC Code 20-42.5. Again, this is up to that amount. I want to also specifically point out that this is custodial fees, security and safety. This is our personnel that are not involved directly in instruction. It's important, of course, for those individual salaries as well as the care and maintenance for our facilities and security.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution R-12-2022 to transfer funds from the Education Fund to the Operating Fund?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? We call roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes. Next, we have our approval of resolution R-13-2022 for Financial Goals. Dr. Alanez?
IC Code 20-42.5-3. This identifies the efficiency of expenditures, of course, our spending being based upon whether expenditures help achieve our district goals, and ultimately, to continue to increase dollars in the classroom.
Thank you. I will read this resolution. Financial Goals, Portage Township Schools Values, Financial Decisions That Positively Impact Students, Portage Township Schools Value Responsible Stewardship, Accountability to Community Taxpayers, Forward Thinking As It Pertains to Budgets and Finance. Portage Township Schools Shall Strive to Increase the Percentage of Spending for the Student Instructional Expenditure Categories As Compared to Other Expenditure Categories Adz Ascribed in IC 20-42.5-3 For the Next Fiscal Year By Identifying Efficiencies in All Expenditure Categories. Spending Decisions Will Be Based Upon Whether the Expenditure Helps to Achieve the Following District Goals. PTS Will Create a Culture of High Achievement. PTS Will Create a Culture of Technology Innovation. PTS Will Create a Culture of Collaboration and Acceptance in a Safe and Secure Learning Environment. PTS Will Be Nationally Recognized. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution R-13-22 Financial Goals?
I'd like a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Next, we have our approval of resolution R-14-22 for Appropriations and Tax Rates for 2023.
Again, this was properly advertised and also available for the public's review. And of course, at the hearing, public comment as well, the adopted budget, as was stated previously, $90,237,983.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution R-14-2022 for Appropriations and Tax Rates for 2023?
Make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
So I would just like to state that this includes the rainy day amount, which is $4 million, the debt service, $9,933,809, the school pension debt, $660,874, education, $53,322,000, operations, $22,321,300, with that total amount that was stated.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Melletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next up, we have our retroactive approval of the revised employee handbook.
As was shared in my comments at our last public meeting, I had stated that I would bring to the board for retroactive approval that our personal, I'm sorry, yeah, personal time off or PTO days for non-union employees, they will receive the same as our union employees do. So the paid holiday changes are on page 59 and 60, as this was the first year that our support staff employees received an additional paid holiday, which was Friday of fall break. The 52-week full-time and school-year full-time employees moving forward will have Martin Luther King Day and the Friday of Fall Break, that they're getting those two additional days as paid holidays. Winter holiday is not on the calendar, so those are 12 paid holidays this year in total. Winter holiday is not on the calendar, so those are twelve paid holidays this year in total. And the new P T O language is on page sixty-one. Again, we're also wanting this for our non-union employees as we feel as though their personal time off is, um, for them to utilize, and we changed that from sick and personal days.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the revised employee handbook?
I make a motion to approve the revised employee handbook.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Any discussion? We call roll, please.
Trustee Malletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of contracts for I T services for Power School Hosting Services.
So the hosting service is a subscription, and the term of this is twelve months. So it will be October nineteenth, um, through May twenty-fourth of twenty-three. So we're asking to align the ending date with our Power School subscription. So it's a little shorter this time, so the cost of that contract is twelve thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. This is the service, um, that allows us to, to not host on-site. Power School completes all of our updates, and this is a more secure form of cybersecurity. Uh, we were fortunate enough in another Porter County School District. This was something that, uh, through a recent, um, situation that they had, it was a, a good thing to check off our list that we are already hosting off-site.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the contract for the I T services for Power School Hosting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Well, my question is, what, what do you mean by hosting it, um, on-site or off-site?
So in the event that Portage Township Schools were to, um, be under a cyber attack, our, uh, most secure financial and employee information is hosted by Power School, um, in this situation. So our e-finance information, we do not host internally. We have that hosted elsewhere. So a lot of cyber attacks in recent times have been schools, and then they're taking that information and requiring a ransom. Uh, and again, this just recently happened at another district in our county, and this was something that, again, is really beneficial and increases our security overall for that sensitive information and financial information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We call roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Malletta.
Yes. Next, we have our retroactive approval of resolution R fifteen dash twenty-two, dedicated paid holiday. So we, I will read this. The resolution of the School Board of Trustees, Portage Township Schools Corporation, dedicated paid holiday. Whereas workers in all sectors across America are experiencing increased burnout. Whereas, according to Rand study, sixty percent of teachers and forty-eight percent of principals in America are feeling the effects of, of burnout. Whereas, one solution to addressing burnout is to provide employees with additional time to spend outside the workplace. Whereas, Portage Township Schools has scheduled a teacher workday for Thursday, October the twentieth. Whereas, all P T S staff members dedicate themselves to providing high-quality education, support services, and facilities for our students. Whereas, the effects of our staff members' work is noticed by this board and throughout our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Portage Township School Board of Trustees supports the use of October twentieth, twenty twenty-two teacher workday as a paid holiday and an opportunity for our staff assigned to work that day to remain out of their buildings and take time for themselves. Union and non-union support staff will now receive Friday, October the twenty-first, twenty-two as a paid holiday. We appreciate the creative thinking and work of Superintendent Almanez to make this happen so that our staff can return to work after fall break, having extra time to focus on themselves, adopted this twenty-fifth day of October twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R fifteen dash twenty-two, dedicated paid holiday?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank our superintendent for thinking so creatively and out of the box, uh, in order for all the staff to have that additional day that was paid. And we all need time to decompress and do some self-care. And, um, really appreciate that, that, that happened. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. Thank you for, um, I know you've been spending a lot of time in the buildings, and you've got to see firsthand, this is, this is our tough times for, uh, for students, for teachers, for staff, uh, in the schools, uh, all across the country. And, uh, I know from conversations I've had with you, um, it's been very moving with the things that you've seen and observed, and to come up with this as an idea, and, uh, um, if you would like, can you, can you share how this was received by, uh, by the staff?
Um, so when, uh, trying to think creatively, how we as a school district, um, could support our, all of our personnel and allow them to have the opportunity to take a breath. Um, what we know about resilient teams is you also have to take a minute to reprioritize, to refocus, and to get a minute away. And so in order to do that, it was a great finale to say, okay, quarter one is done. We've got a lot of work to do for quarter two. Take a minute for yourself. Leave your work at work and go do something that's meaningful to you. As Dr. Stevens and I, I know Mrs. Williams, uh, also Mrs. Murray, um, we have continued to get out into our schools. And while doing so, we are finding that our staff continues to work so hard still, yet they're drained. And we are witnessing ourselves, uh, a lower morale in our employees. And as leaders of the district, it's, um, been a priority of ours to help refocus and allow that moment, but we didn't know how to do it. Um, I want to personally thank the board because, um, this is something that, as you mentioned, is out of the box and, um, requires your retroactive approval. Um, but it was something that was such a necessity. Uh, the receive, the, the, the way this was received was phenomenal. The one thing we said is if you would take a moment, if you felt like it, send back a picture of what you did for yourself. Um, I received a photograph from a teacher who, uh, was standing, uh, over some beautiful hill, had an art easel up and had drawn the scenery. And just, there was no words, just the picture. I had, uh, an employee send an email that their senior fur baby had just had eight teeth removed, and, um, instead of wearing all day, was able to cuddle. Um, people who had visited an aunt or uncle that they hadn't in a while, staff members who went out together to enjoy some coffee, work on an old car. Um, I could go on and on with the different things, spending time with their own children, picking up their child in another school district that they've, they have in kindergarten, and it was a surprise, and they would never have been able to do that because normally our breaks were aligning, and this was that extra opportunity. Um, so people really took seriously the importance of stepping away from the work. It's important work, but we do have to step away on occasion. So it was extremely well received. I'm still going through nearly three hundred emails of responses, and that doesn't include the responses we originally received when we stated, you are not to report to work tomorrow. There was probably another hundred there. So, um, very encouraging, and again, I think as leaders, it is, it goes a long way to say, we recognize morale is low. We, we want and will pri, to, we want to and will prioritize your own mental health and well-being. And so this was that way that we felt creatively could do it.
Thank you. Any other comments? We call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Malletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Then lastly, we have our approval of resolution R sixteen dash twenty-two, goal of ninety percent, ninety-five percent on I read. Resolution recognizing Portage Township School Corporation's commitment to the state proficiency goal of ninety-five percent on I read three assessment by twenty twenty-seven. Whereas, one in five Indiana students have not yet mastered foundational reading skills by the end of third grade. Whereas, excuse me, every student must learn to read and in turn, read to learn. Whereas, the Indiana Department of Education has set a goal of reaching and exceeding ninety-five percent passage rate on the I read three assessment by twenty twenty-seven. Whereas, the Portage Township School Corporation is dedicated in developing foundational literacy, literacy skills for every student. Whereas, the Portage Township School Corporation is dedicated to providing a quality education and learning envi, environment for every student. Be it resolved by the Board of School Trustees of the Portage Township School Corporation, section one, that the Board of School Trustees recognizes Portage Township School Corporation's commitment to reaching and exceeding a ninety-five percent passage rate by the end of grade three or before on I read three assessments by twenty twenty-seven. And section two, that the Secretary of the Board of Trustees transmits a copy of this resolution to the Indiana Department of Education as acknowledgement of their partnership and dedication in reaching and exceeding the ninety-five percent passage rate on the I read three assessment by twenty twenty-seven, adopted this twenty-fifth day of October twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R sixteen dash twenty-two, goal of ninety-five percent on I read?
Make a motion.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
So I guess I have a question or comment. Um, the first one being a question. What do we do? I heard the word partnership. How do we partner with our parents in order to assist them in helping to prepare their children to do better and learn how to read and then read to learn? So how are we, are we meeting with, with those families of third graders in preparation for this state test?
There's a lot that goes into this, uh, Mrs. Williams and her team specifically with the Title One involvement evenings for parent engagement. Um, also, the various packs that we have sent home to include this previous summer, where, um, we sent them home in English. And for our English learners, we spent the, sent them in Spanish so that families could engage and have opportunities for on-grade level reading to take place. Um, our principals and our entire district team that is engaged in the curriculum specifically, um, we have that in our reading plans for our Title One submissions, the various outlined strategies, and also in our continuous school improvement plans. Um, and the one thing we talked about was having principals kind of summarize some of those things. So in an upcoming, uh, meeting, I will make sure that we have the strategies specifically. But, uh, our family engagement evenings, um, our opportunities for parents to come into the classroom, various activities that are sent home with specific instructions that are easy to follow, and the materials to engage with a student, um, our one book, one school, one book, uh, opportunities that engage families at home. I think those have been very well received, and all of our schools do engage in those.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So also, um, I noticed that in the, um, website for the Indiana Department of Education, there's a, an area for families to talk to their children and, and skills that they can help in preparing students, uh, to learn how to read. And one of them that really stands out is that families should, and it's a really good idea, to always read to their children, um, starting from birth. Uh, and show them and demonstrate the importance of reading. Read to your child, you know, every day. I know that sounds sometimes, uh, not practical, but, you know, when my son was little and I, he would be in a car, and I would see a billboard, and I'd say, tell me what that message is. And so, you know, it's important to sit down and cuddle with your children, uh, with your little ones and read. But as your, as everyone's lives are so busy, you could find something to read at any given point. So, um, that's just a message that I like to send to our families that the importance of reading, uh, is that it should be demonstrated immediately as, as soon as, as they're born and, you know.
You know, one thing that I think has been a priority for our administration over the years has been to be certain that students have a home library. That's one of the best ways to encourage that opportunity as a family to read, to learn, and then, uh, or to learn to read and then to read to learn, to include our high schoolers. Uh, we actually now, middle school through high school, when we have novel studies, we no longer order class sets that stay in the class for ten and twenty years. Those students have those novels to keep forever, to write in, to do whatever they need to, and then they, we encourage them to make them part of their home library. So, again, something that's just an additional piece of what we're trying to do to recognize the importance of having available materials, um, in the homes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Malletta.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Almanez?
As I mentioned, at the trunk or treat, which was a huge success, it ended up in the field house. It was phenomenal. Um, it occurred right before the choir concerts. I was able to attend both of those. Um, our food service team, as I mentioned, had shared about the Angel, uh, Food Fund. I just want to mention that that is not debt that we can write off. Is that correct, Mr. Gronn? Okay. And at one point in time, our, our debt there was eighty-nine thousand dollars for students who were not able to pay those meals. And, um, it was through some generous donations and then some creative financing on, uh, Mr. Gronn's, uh, part and, and his team that we were able to get that debt down. However, as you can imagine, now that the pandemic, um, is as far along as it is, and we no longer are having free meals, that debt is already starting to climb. So we want to get that, um, information out because we've had businesses and individual families that have requested it so that they can donate. And as you said, we'll get it on social media and various places. Um, I also wanted to share my sincere appreciation for the board's support of this beautiful space that is utilized day in and day out. I want to thank, uh, Dr. Stevens for working collaboratively with Mrs. Kelly to make certain that the programming is there as she received additional training, which then now means our entire district is K through twelve with Project Legal Way, which is something to really be proud of. Um, and I also want to thank you for the dedication to Mr. Lavenda, who is, again, just such a, a beloved educator that I, I will honestly tell you never left the district even after retirement. He was here. So, um, I will tell you as well that the plaque, once it arrives, I'll make sure to share that with you. But that was just something with timing. Um, we wanted to make sure that we got the plaque right, and we wanted to have that picture that Margot and her family felt would best represent that plaque. Um, I want to thank the entire teaching team, all of our support staff, reiterating yet again that, um, finding small ways to recognize their hard work and when burnout is occurring is something that's on our radar and will continue to prioritize. Um, let's see here. I also wanted to just remind the board that November third is our fall meeting in Shererville for those who are able to attend for, um, Indiana School Board Association. And also that the Chamber Banquet for various recognitions of the school district and school district personnel is November fourth at six P M. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Were there any items not on the agenda the board would like to, uh, bring up at this time?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
So Wilma talking about reading to kids, uh, Terry Lavenda. I've known him since I was sixteen, trying to date his daughter. He, uh, when I had my first child, Nicholas, he told me, you need to read ten thousand words to your child before he gets to kindergarten.
Edna did it.
Edna did a good job. Big sister step.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any, anybody else have anything else? We did not receive any, um, public comment forms, I don't believe. So, uh, with that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.